First up is the approval of the minutes for March 11th, 2025 meeting. May I have a motion? First Grace, second elect. Do I have any questions or comments on the minutes?
Seen.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion, minutes are approved, so extensions. So next up is approval of the February 2025 treasurer's report. May I have a motion? First Heather, second Grace. Do I have any questions or comments on that? All in favor? Okay, the treasurer's report is approved. Next up, we have recognition of community. I understand, Madam Clerk, that we have several people who wish to speak. Okay, so let me advise people who are unfamiliar with our process. Recognition of community includes the opportunity for community members to offer their thoughts to the board. As stated in our policy 1360, we encourage public participation on school-related matters at board meetings, whether those matters are on the agenda or not. However, this is not a forum for the discussion of matters that are not school-related. Also, our policy states that any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. The board cannot and will not respond to any questions asked in public comment. We have a specific agenda for this meeting. If warranted, the board will follow up on issues raised during public comment outside of the meeting or potentially add it to a future agenda if there are relevant updates for the community. Each community member can speak for up to three minutes and public comment will last for a total of 30 minutes. Jennifer will give you a verbal warning 30 seconds before the end of your time so you can wrap up your remarks. Jennifer, if you would please introduce the first speaker. And if each speaker would please state your name and if you have children in the district and their grades.
Good evening, everyone, Dr. Hamilton, members of the board. I would like to acknowledge the significant number of second grade parents from Sealy Place and around the district. My name is Rebecca Everden-Foley and my husband and I have a daughter who is in second grade currently at Sealy Place and a son who will be entering kindergarten at Sealy Place in the fall. As we indicated in our correspondence, which we addressed to Dr. Hamilton and the board last week, we are concerned by the proposed budget for the 2025 and 2026 school year, which we understand projects the condensing the rising third graders at Sealy Place back into two sections. We would like to point out that other than this class size issue, we've been very happy with the school system and the teachers our daughters had at Sealy Place. And we have had positive interactions with everyone we have encountered in the Edgemont School District. Nevertheless, the increase in class sizes is concerning to us for two reasons. First, we have seen the educational and social benefits our daughter has gained by being in smaller class of 16 students this year. Specifically, her reading comprehension, understanding of math concepts, intellectual curiosity and confidence among her peers has improved significantly. This is of particular note in the case of our daughter, who is the youngest student in the grade. Second, we are concerned that if the district continues to maintain class sizes that are over capacity, then excellent teachers will become frustrated and leave Edgemont. We believe that the teachers, particularly those at the elementary school level, are the backbone of this district and must be valued. What attracted us to Edgemont initially was the small community and small class sizes. We understood when we moved here that it was a priority for the district to maintain small class sizes so that students could benefit from individualized attention. We understand that other neighboring districts, even those that are much larger than Edgemont, like White Plains, are maintaining smaller class sections. Even New York City is capping kindergarten through third grade classes at 20 students. Why is maintaining small class sizes in the elementary schools in Edgemont no longer a priority? We also understand that although there are already 46 children registered for kindergarten at Sealy Place next year, the district has not yet acknowledged that there must be three sections. Had we known that there was even a possibility that our child would have 23 children with one teacher in his kindergarten class, we would not likely have moved to Edgemont. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Hamilton, this Dean School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Elizabeth. My husband and I were parents of three children in the Edgemont community. Avery, second grade, Omwene, first grade at Sealy Place, and our youngest, Asher, she's two. First, I wanted to say we are a privileged community and I want to start by acknowledging that. And then I'm incredibly grateful to the educators and leaders who make this school a place my children love and feel really safe in. But with that privilege comes responsibility and I'm here with other parents to ask them to keep three sections for next year's third grade. I know there are tons of things to make and I have an evidence-based reason for why this does. So in 2005, Tennessee class size followed over 6,500 kindergarten to third grade students across 80 schools. The randomized control trial, which is phenomenal. Students were randomly assigned to small classes, 13 to 17 students, or regular ones with 22, 25 students with a what they found of students in small class sizes, 13 to 17, notably Avery's current second grade class. These scores consistently higher than other achievement tests than those in their minor size classes, 22 to 25 students, notably his larger sized class, especially for minority students. But what's amazing is that impact persisted. The students with smaller classes had better educational outcomes, high school or college and overall economic life outcomes as adults. So we've seen it firsthand, smaller classes gave kids space to find their voice, build confidence, learn. But the evidence also suggests that this is especially true through the third grade. So this is more than a preference, it's one of the serious returns that we can make in their future. And as I consider trade-offs and improvements, I hope you'll consider our recommendation. Thank you.
Before I start, I just want to say I'm not here to talk about class size, but I do fully support what you're all fighting for. So my name is Liz Silverstein and I'm talking about synthetic turf and natural grass. I am speaking as a former PTSA board member and as a PTA co-president, who in 2010 raised a quarter of a million dollars to build five new playgrounds at Greenville and Sealy. My husband Glenn coached travel soccer. My daughter was a varsity soccer player when Blandford transitioned to synthetic turf. Currently, I am an environmental advocate. Since Blandford was installed, the body of scientific evidence pointing to how harmful synthetic turf is to our children's health, especially elementary school children, has grown too big to ignore. There are studies from Mount Sinai Hospital, Columbia University and more. New York State passed a law making it illegal to sell synthetic turf containing PFOS. This law goes into effect at the end of 2026, just a few months after Edgemont is scheduled to install a non-conforming baseball field containing PFOS. Some have said that no PFOS will be intentionally added. This isn't the test and all synthetic turf contains PFOS. Meanwhile, methods of maintaining grass fields have evolved to meet the ever-growing demand. Maintenance can be outsourced at a reasonable cost, which would allow youth sports to continue using Greenville and Sealy Place fields instead of relocating to this new synthetic field at the high school. As an example, the Tarrytown School District, with a student population just a bit larger than ours, has seven fields. Their two football fields are synthetic turf. Their other five, which include baseball and soccer, are natural grass. The director of facilities said fields are used seven days a week. Tarrytown outsources some of the field maintenance at a cost of $25,000 to $35,000 a year. Why natural grass? It requires no chemical use because soil has beneficial microbes that deal effectively with bodily fluids like blood. This is the opposite of synthetic turf, which has to be cleaned with pesticide-grade product to get rid of those same fluids. Grass does not need to be disposed of every 10 years. It isn't made of plastic and filled with toxic pellets. Grass maintains a cool temperature, sequesters carbon, effectively absorbs stormwater and has fewer season-ending injuries. Over a 20-year period, natural grass actually costs less at approximately 1.45 million, while synthetic turf is about 2.85 million. We urge the board to consider a proposal from an expert in this area before putting down sod at Greenville this summer because if the soil isn't healthy, the sod won't thrive. And finally, at the September board meeting, the facilities director said the school has analyzed the data and found, quote, "synthetic turf is very safe." Given all the evidence to the contrary, we again ask that you share your data with the community. Thank you, and I'm speaking on behalf of Keep Edgemont Green.
Good evening. My name is Dan Stugenski. I'm a parent of a fifth grader and a second grader at Sealy Place. I'd like to thank the board and the administration for their dedication to our children and their education. I'd like to thank the teachers, especially those that are here today. They're what make Edgemont education so special for our children. I'm here to urge the board and the administration to adopt a plan for three sections for Sealy third grade next year and otherwise emphasize the value of smaller class sizes across the board. Like, I understand there are constraints. We can't pay for everything we would want in the schools and choices need to be made. But to me, it seems like there is no better use of resources, no better use of budget funds than on our equitable teachers and keeping quality teachers in the district, educating our children. In addition to keeping quality teachers in the school, the link between class size and educational performance is well established. I had a whole section here on the Tennessee Star Study. I'm gonna skip a lot of it because I don't want to be repetitive. But, you know, it couldn't be closer, better parallels to what's happening in the third grade here. It tested if class sizes of average 15 against class sizes of average 22. And what it showed is over a four-year period that was tested, the kids in smaller classes had educational performance that was the equivalent of having three more months of schooling. You know, that's an amazing effect. It's quantifiable, it's proven. That's where we should be spending the money. The effects of class sizes are particularly pronounced at younger grades. Third grade is still very much early in their educational journey. This is a class that was impacted before they reached Sealy, but in their preschool years by COVID. So we all know there's catching up to do. You've heard already from other parents, I think you're gonna hear from some others, about the effects they've had on their individual students. Certainly, I could say the same for mine. But in general, I would urge the board, this is where the money should be spent.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Laura Goldman. My husband and I have two children at Sealy, a fourth grader and a second grader. I just want to reiterate the gratitude that everybody else before me has expressed about being part of this community, for the amazing teachers we have, for the commitment, the time and all of the thoughtfulness that the board and administration does into these decisions. Like other parents you're hearing from tonight, we want to share our concern and disappointment regarding the current budget projection that has next year's Sealy third grade returning to two sections. There's a number of reasons that we're going to conserve the preliminary plans. First is that we do, as I said, we strongly believe that smaller class sizes result in a better educational experience for all students. I was also good at mentioning projects, I'll leave that out. I will say that our son Jonathan, personal, has really greatly benefited from the smaller class sizes this year. We compared last year when his class had 22 students to this year when he had 16 students in his class. It's allowed for degree of individualized intervention, but it just wasn't possible. Doesn't matter how amazing our teachers are. There's just more individualized attention that's clearly available in a class of that size. And we see that directly increase his engagement with his work, his connection with his teacher. We also would just note that right now, as projected, the class sizes for two sections, 23 students and 24 students, are right at the cross, right at the agreement maximum target for the district. Every single year, we've seen multiple students come into both our science class and our driving class. And so we're starting space at a situation where we're right at that limit, almost certainly going up in the course of the year. Our second concern is specifically having two sections instead of three, really regardless of class size. During both kindergarten and first grade, we had the class split into two sections. And we saw some challenging social dynamics, some pre-behavioral issues in the grade. With this year, we're hearing from teachers at Sealy often that they have optimized their position in a way that they couldn't before. And we're seeing that result in just real mitigation of the social behavioral challenge. And so we have a lot of concerns that referring to two classes, be a step back. It could result in return of this. Honestly, we're concerned that it echoes earlier. We're concerned that it's becoming increasingly challenging for Edgemont to attract and retain the teaching staff that's so talented and that would also highly be if class sizes were trend here. How do we be skilled teachers? We know we're capable. We can't have a range of classroom dynamics. We can imagine how challenging that is for them. But they're teaching in classrooms that are so close to where you could possibly have the agreed on targets. And we also worry that attracting more teachers and the number of classes that they're executing here is making Edgemont more attractive and desirable district to teach. And we really hope that we should be doing everything we can to set up our teachers for success and recruit for talent. We understand, Dr. Hamilton, preparing for this really complex regarding this issue, we really appreciate. We're looking forward to this. I'd just like to reiterate two key points that are on the line. First, we appreciate understanding the benefits that we see of having two third grade sections next year instead of three. And second, we're hoping to understand how the children of Edgemont can effective next third grade consolidate into two sections. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Hamilton, everyone on the board, fellow parents. My name is Lucas Chaffee. I'm a Sealy grad and also Edgemont grad. I've got two children in third and fifth grade. I'm talking tonight about the cuts. And when I was watching the school board meeting from a few weeks ago and this topic was brought up, I was concerned with how it was presented to the community. The word cuts was mentioned one time, but repeatedly, as the administrator, who I actually like, it's nothing personal, the way it was presented kept talking about how if this happens, we will have to put three teachers on the preferred eligibility list. If this happens, we'll have to put two teachers on the preferred eligibility list. We kept using a euphemism for cuts. It's not a preferred eligibility list to the person who's getting cut. It's not a preferred eligibility list to the people who aren't sure about whether their job's gonna be there next year. It's not a preferred eligibility list for the parents. Sixth grade next year was also potentially going to be affected. Currently, it's not, but my concern stands in that if it's gonna be cuts, we need to speak to parents and say it's cuts. That's what it is. It's cuts because we can't afford it. If we can't afford these things, we need to have a serious conversation with the community because Edgemont will come out and support. We supported the bond, million-dollar projects, no questions. We have the affluence. What's important is we keep that commitment to our kids, to the teachers. If everyone knew that these cuts were on the table, if the discussion, the honest words of cuts to our teachers was in the school board highlights, we couldn't even hold the meeting in this room because there'd be too many people that would want to attend. We need to make sure that the information is accessible to all the parents so they know exactly what's going on in the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hanon and I have two children in the school district. So first of all, just like everyone else, I'd like to echo just the privilege and the honor to be able to speak here. And no surprises, the agenda and what I'm advocating for is also lower student-teacher ratios as my child is also in second grade. And I don't think I have a lot of new perspective to add beyond what everyone has already, you know, articulated really well. But I'd just like to share my own anecdote around my son Julius, who is in second grade. And he has been at this school since kindergarten. And, you know, beyond just the social aspects and academic aspects, I just want to share that, you know, in his current construct of having a smaller class, I've just noticed that there's just so much more attention that the teachers can provide and just that sense of more like affectional education and motivation that he gets. And also the pure joy and enjoyment that I see in learning, whether that's math or learning, has really just like been like really something that I could observe even at school and also at home and he comes back with homework. So just wanted like to just iterate that. And like, that's just been like really resonant when this topic came up with other parents. So wanted to emphasize that point. And I understand that as the board and as administrators, there's just a lot of trade-offs that you need to make and difficult decisions. I could see an argument for other programs and other language programs, pre-K, other things that also clearly have a really good ROI. But again, at this young age, I think just that foundational ability to learn and get more attention is just so beneficial. So without knowing all the ins and outs, like I think we should really consider this a priority investment in our younger children, at least in the younger grades. And also just observing everything that has been like discussed in this public forum. I think we are really privileged and we are an affluent society and an affluent school zone. So I just really encourage everyone, including the board and the administrators, to think about other options in terms of, you know, I think there's like other, there's like lots of like other ways to like flexibly think about this and there's more room to think about budgets and other possibilities to raise money. So I think just want to echo everything that the other parents have said and want to also emphasize that like student-teacher ratio, I think, is a really foundational, important aspect of getting a good education, especially at the lower grades. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Maxwell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak right and for listening. I have three children, two at Sealy and one at Junior High, and my wife is at Sealy at Edgemont. I grow up. We are proud of this. We want a community that is built around an outstanding school system. We're also thankful for the commitment of the teachers, faculty, the administration, school board and the parents have made this the leading school district and we all have been able to keep it that way. Some of the other parents, the veteran and the veteran's parents have already presented a voice and concern of a potential recondensing of the current Sealy second grade class for next year. The current classes are possibly 16 students per class, falling in the outward range of the class size that affects the teaching. Edgemont provides a strong, underrepresented school and we should be striving to diversify the ratio of our. Speaking of our powerful experience, we've seen notable growth in our sons' confidence and enjoyment. Our sons seem more confident with this English class. He is a kid who naturally is ready for jumping in and in a small degree, he's more comfortable thinking part of it. Ms. Evans will be able to take the time this year to really understand my child and support his growth. We're concerned this will be more than pork and cheese to the following state additional position in each class. Thank you, Ben and Clive. We need to district, we're doing very well with all other businesses. We need to be able to attract and keep top talent in this, as we've been able to do for decades, by showing our support for our team. We need this more community being prioritized in the optimal learning environment and the teacher on whom we depend for educational excellence. Good, thank you.
Thank you for your time and your emails. We appreciate that change to engage in respectful and thoughtful dialogue. Share our commitment to supporting our children and strengthening our school community. Someone most likely, Dr. Hamilton, will be following up by acknowledging your concerns and engaging in conversation.
With that, I want to move on to the rest of recognition of community. Dr. Hamilton?
Good evening, everyone. I want to again just reiterate what Jennifer, what our president just said and to all those speakers this evening, thank you very much for your comments and for your emails. I truly appreciate the opportunity to engage in such respectful and thoughtful dialogue. And let me just say, we share a common commitment to supporting our children and strengthening our school community. I will be following up via email to acknowledge your concerns and to continue the conversation. So thank you and please anticipate that email in the next day or so. We also have some students that we want to acknowledge this evening for outstanding achievement in three key areas. The math counts endeavor, the Science Olympiad and the EHS National Jazz Festival. And Mary Rose Joseph is going to be speaking on behalf of our EHS administrative staff this evening to acknowledge these students.
It's quite clever to celebrate our students all over what they do and how they do in the classroom. So it's very clever to share that Edgemont Math Counts Team won first place at February 28th Math Counts Competition in the Florida Bowl, which actually qualified them for the New York State competition. I want to congratulate all of you who have been on the podium, who have been participating in the state competition in Zara those brings this past month. In addition, I would also thank senior, Serena King, who we heard this. And the project, who's in this room for certification and technology and, again, the vision of the role. So it's a testament of you and the team and the parent community working together for these results. We have Gavin Sizemore, the team, for experiencing the first time state tournament this past year. At one turn, the average level of insurance, this is very much longer than the time in the state tournament. 62 for a long state ball where the competing, so it's pretty amazing that we have top in some of this. Justin, who was there as well, top in the place. We have Chan as having called one eighth place influences, that which is to them. Yeah. We think about the impact of the events, which was in a
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Mary Rose. I continue to be extremely proud of our students and all the work that they do and the teachers who support them in order to reach these extraordinary levels of accomplishment and levels of distinction.
So our next up is acceptance of gifts.
Yes, we have quite a few gifts this evening, almost thirty thousand dollars in gifts. So I appreciate your indulgence as I go through them, but this is a great way to spend time this evening. From the Edgemont E-Club and the amount of five thousand dollars to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for the annual upkeep of Banff, Banff Field. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of two thousand dollars to the Edgemont Junior Senior High School for the eighth grade end of the year trip. Edgemont Junior Senior High School PTSA in the amount of two hundred dollars for the Science Olympiad State Tournament. From the Edgemont Junior Senior High School PTSA in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars for International Day. Again, from the PTSA in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for counselors and psychologists for the annual de-stress fest. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of five hundred dollars for Pride Works. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars to the Edgemont Junior Senior High School for the Hudson Valley Renegade Bus for Steam Event. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for the Science Olympiad State Tournament. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of five hundred dollars to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for Go. From the Edgemont PTSA in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for the EHS Arts Department Visiting Artists. From the Elementary School PTA in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars to Green Bill for Hands-on History from Greenberg Nature Academy. Again, from the PTA in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy five cents to Sealy Place for the Greenberg Nature Center Hands-on History Program for fourth grade students at Sealy Place. From the Edgemont PTA in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars to Sealy Place for motivational speaker and cyclist. From the Edgemont PTA in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars to Sealy Place for storyteller April Armstrong. And lastly, from the Edgemont PTA in the amount of eight hundred and sixty five dollars to Sealy Place for Christopher Cadence.
Well, let's see if I can list. I have a motion for some of these gifts. First, Mary, second, Josephine. Any questions to comment? All in favor?
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you again to the E-Club, PTA and the PTSA. This is a tremendous list showcasing enormous generosity and a wide variety of projects and experiences that enhance the experience of our students. I wanted to give a particular shout out to the E-Club's gift page, which represents a multi-year commitment to the upkeep and maintenance of Lanford Field. My understanding is the ninth year, nineteen fifteen years in which they've made this donation. So thank you for the continuing commitment to our athletic program. We're grateful for these strong partnerships that these gifts represent with our community organizations. But I want to remind everyone that these donations are not possible without the community. So please continue to respond when these organizations reach out to you. And with that, we move on to board committee reports. First up, I understand we have three policies up the front.
Second reading, right?
Yes. So the first two policies that were second read, policy eighty six twenty five, eighty six thirty five represented for first read to the CO at the last board meeting. Eighty six twenty five is a policy on technology use and data privacy and eighty six thirty five covers how the district would handle data breach or the notifications if and when that bomb breaches happened. And so we've received no comments, no edits, and so those are moving forward as is. The second reading and final adoption today. In a conjunction with this adoption, policy seventy two fifty, which formally covered this material, as a content that that's broken eighty six twenty five thirty five is now being suspended because these two policies are now replacing the old policy. The next and final policy we're going to be talking about tonight is policy ninety five fifty, which covers the expression of breast milk in the workplace. This was initially adopted last year in March twenty twenty four, but a specific proposal was in the day, so we're going to go through the second adoption tonight. The amendment reads that in addition to paid break time and mealtime, the community district will provide thirty minutes of additional paid break time for employees to express breast milk as necessary. And so that early minutes was originally unpaid and it's now being moved to a a paid foundation.
Okay, you said there's a policy that needs to be suspended first before we
Seventy two fifty is going to be suspended.
Okay, Dr. Hamilton, we vote first to do the suspend, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to suspend policy seventy two fifty? First, Ami, second, Heather, all in favor? Okay, seventy two fifty has been suspended. Is there any reason not to take all three policies altogether? Okay, so adopting policy eighty six twenty five, eighty six thirty five and ninety five fifty. May I have a motion? First, Heather, second, Ami. Do I have any questions or comments from the board? All in favor? All right, the three policies have taken the ballot. Thank you very much. Next up is a brief update from the Finance Committee, which met on March twentieth. The first item on our agenda was the successful sale on March twelfth of twelve billion dollars in bonds, which represents the first issuance under the bond proposition agreed by the community in October. They sold at three point three five percent, which was about twenty basis points below the last S O we received and with a premium of seven hundred thousand dollars. So a very successful sale. Our first debt service payment coming due in September. Congratulations to everyone who worked very hard on making that a reality. The next major topic at our meeting was updated projections regarding our fund balance. We continue to show surplus over the budgeted amount, both on the revenue side, thanks in large part to strong interest earnings and higher tuition payments and on the expenditure side, resulting in an anticipated increase to fund balance. We had a discussion that continued yesterday and even a little into today about how to allocate these surplus funds as we are at or near the limit in most of our reserves. This requires a multi-year look at the impact on future budgets as we bring on new debt. As our goal continues to be manage the budget to limit huge spikes in property taxes. And I understand Brian will be speaking to that a little bit, in a little bit. We also got a preview of some of the other budget materials that Brian will be shortly discussing, so I will leave it to him to provide greater, greater detail on those matters.
Thank you.
Moving on, I do not have a report tonight, so next up is the superintendent's report.
Awesome, thank you. Tonight, the superintendent's report is devoted exclusively to presenting the final administrative budget proposal. And I'd like to just start while the, is the budget loaded on the screen yet?
I'm going to open one second.
Okay, the twenty five twenty six final administrative budget proposal represents the culmination of a thoughtful, forward-thinking planning anchored in our shared commitment to meeting the needs of today's learner while laying a strong foundation for tomorrow's success. So it looks with one foot in the current situation and one foot planted and forward-thinking into our future. This is not simply a budget, is it? It is a strategic roadmap designed to position the Edgemont community for continued excellence, innovation and long-term prosperity in making the investment in our children. Through collaboration across every school and department and with special recognition to our principals and our administrative leaders, this process reflects one of the most intentional and effective budget planning efforts probably in our region. Their insight, partnership and dedication to both fiscal responsibility and educational excellence have resulted in a proposal that is not only prudent but also visionary. And I also want to extend a special thanks to the Finance Committee and the board as a whole for their partnership and helping us synthesize information and prioritize those things that we think are important. I also want to give a special thanks to the administration's careful stewardship as we are entering into this next fiscal year in a strong position, prepared to sustain high-impact programs, advance equity, support instructional innovation and invest in our students, keeping in mind the profile of an Edgemont graduate as our target. This budget is a testament to the power of strategic leadership and community-centered planning and it reflects our ongoing commitment to making the best possible decisions for today and for generations to come. Our proposal this evening starts with an abstract that identifies ten key areas that I want to draw attention to, and then I'll move into the executive summary before passing it over to Brian. These ten key areas are intentionally aligned with the work of our plan for meeting district goals. The first is more than a fiscal plan, it's a strategic blueprint. The proposed budget is not just about numbers, it's a strategic blueprint that reflects Edgemont's enduring commitment to academic excellence, equity and looking at the development of the whole child using a holistic approach. Secondly, it's grounded in purposeful review. Every line in this budget has been carefully considered through a rigorous review of each school and department, ensuring alignment with our district's mission to uphold high standards and prepare students for lifelong learning. As a part of this effort, our principals and department leaders develop their building and department-specific vision and mission statement to guide this work and ensure alignment with the departments and with the board goals. Thirdly, curricular coherence and programmatic effectiveness. This budget supports a coherent and connected curriculum across all grades and promotes instructional practices that are grounded in best practices in educational research and giving careful consideration to results. Fourth, there is equity at the core. Equity is not an add-on, it is central to our budget philosophy. This proposal this evening ensures that all students, regardless of their background or ability, have access to the resources and opportunities they need to thrive. Fifth, which I mentioned earlier, investing in the whole child. The budget recognizes that learning does not stop at the classroom door. It invests in co-curricular and extracurricular programs that shape well-rounded students, socially and emotionally capable individuals and students who are ready for the world that they will encounter when they graduate from Edgemont. Our sixth point is that it emphasizes and pays attention to facilities, technology and professional development. We are planning targeted investment in our facilities, which as we all know, has not been prioritized in previous budgets just due to budgetary constraints. We are also mindful of our continued advancement with technology and to ensure ongoing professional development for our staff to support innovation, safety and teacher effectiveness. Our seventh key area is a process rooted in data and collaboration. So this budget is the result of a collaborative, data-driven process that reflects the voices and needs of our community, our staff and our students. Our eighth key area is a vision for the future. Every financial decision was made with the future in mind, ensuring we are not only maintaining what works but also pushing forward with a vision for continuous improvement. Our ninth key area is a reflection on our values. There was considerable work that was done around creating our core values. What is it that we believe in as a community? That was very intentional. At its core, this budget is a testament to Edgemont's values, excellence, innovation, opportunity and a steadfast belief belief in the potential of every student. And hopefully you've noticed the posters in our schools that highlight our core beliefs and our goals so that there is intentional alignment. And lastly, preserving Edgemont's reputation for excellence. This proposed budget reinforces our local and national standing as a premier public school district committed to preparing students for a complex and rapidly evolving world. In our executive summary, my goal was to try to synthesize for you in as succinctly as possible that this budget is a strategic investment aimed at raising student achievement and closing opportunity gaps through equitable access to high-quality instruction. At our core, we have been living very systematically to ensure that our all-means-all commitment is not just words but woven into the fabric of how we do business. It includes a dedicated support for our differently-able students and emphasizes accountability, efficiency and evidence-based decision-making. By continuously monitoring program effectiveness, looking at our data, ensuring that our teachers have an understanding of what's working well for our students and where we need to pivot and that in alignment with district programs and initiative, the district ensures optimal use of resources to maximize student outcomes. It's aligned with educational best practices and the district's vision for the profile of an Edgemont graduate. And lastly, this budget reflects a commitment to excellence, continuous improvement and responsible fiscal stewardship reinforcing Edgemont's standing as a leader in public education, not just in our region or our state, but in the nation. And I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity, before he even speaks, to commend Brian for the hours and hours spent on putting this together for our evening conversations, our weekend, the weekend work around putting this budget together so that it captures a very strategic approach in alignment with all the work that we've been doing. And I think that this board and our community will be very happy with this evening's presentation. Brian?
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. To the board in front of me, you all have your budget finders, which is separated into several different tabs to assist you in your own data gathering, research, explorations as we prepare for our budget work session, which is two weeks from tonight. Included in there, under the presentation tab, is a copy of today's presentation. If you want to see it in paper form as opposed to the digital. Dr. Do you mind just moving the pictures from President Martin's screen if you can? So we've got several presentations today. We talked about departmental budgets, we talked about building-based budgets, we looked at a facility budget. We've spoken about personnel. And tonight, the goal for this presentation is to capture in a very summative way the big picture numbers as it relates to the categories, budget-to-budget increases, tax levy increases, proposed tax rate changes and to understand the overall magnitude and effects of different subcategories within the budget. In particular, those that are related to personnel and those that we used to declare as above or below the line, the non-personnel-related items. Our budget proposal for the twenty five twenty six school year comes in at seventy three million nine hundred and ninety four thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars. It represents a two point six percent budget-to-budget increase over last year for the current year's total. We're proposing a tax levy to support this budget of sixty two million fifty nine thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars. This tax levy is lower than the maximum allowable tax. Which I'll speak to a little bit later in the presentation when we speak about changes since the prior presentations we've made this calendar year. The resulting effect of that tax levy is a one point five one percent increase year-over-year on the current year's tax levy. And then lastly, we've always given the metric of an anticipated tax rate change, although the budget is only one of the two components that feeds into this, the other being the actual taxable assessment of all properties in the district. As both move, it moves the number. But when you put the two together, the anticipated tax rate change is one point eight four percent. Again, you'll notice Again, you'll note at the bottom of the screen, I've indicated that the proposed budget includes a tax levy that is one-point-one million dollars lower than the maximum allowable tax levy. This is based on work as Jennifer indicated. Coming out of the finance committee over the last few days to make some last-minute adjustments. The proposal includes the use of appropriated fund balance from the current year surplus. As a way to assist us in completing phase two of the junior, senior high school. Paving project that will begin this summer. Behind the district offices and continue into the front parking lot in future years. By doing this, we're able to do so without increasing the tax levy by carrying over surplus funds from the current year to accomplish that task in the future year. Next couple of slides give some graphs to just give overall trends in the district. The first one here is our budget-to-budget trend. Our proposed increase of two-point-six percent on the budget is the third lowest of the last ten years. But as you can see, we've we've been up and down, but within some reasonable tolerances. Over that same ten-year period, the tax levy increases have ranged between two-point-one-six percent. That was our low back in two thousand and eighteen. And three-point-nine-six percent the current year, actually the highest in twenty-twenty-five. The average tax rate increase over that same ten-year period is three-point-one-eight percent. Shifting to the tax levy trend. Which you'll see on the chart actually depicts two different metrics. One is the tax levy-to-levy increase year-over-year. The dotted line represents the CPI. As calculated as part of the tax gap calculation. In March each year. Just to kind of monitor the effect of the two over time. The proposed tax levy of one-point-five-one percent is the lowest of the last fourteen-year increases. And remember, this is percent change, not necessarily dollar amount. And so one of the reasons why that is so low is last year, we had a very large considerable transfer to capital. I mean, this year we have a much smaller transfer to capital. That is a very large dollar amount, and so has considerable impact on the overall. Over the last ten years, similar to the slide on budget-to-budget. We have a minimum or low one-point-five-one percent in the current year's projection and a high back in two thousand and nineteen of four-point-three-three percent. I think it's important to note that the average tax rate increase over that period has been two-point-six-nine percent. Which I think is something we should be proud of. Given if you track CPI over that same period, the average rate was two-point-eight-eight percent. We've been in incredibly volatile times as it relates to expenditures outside of personnel obligations, and we've been able to manage that. With pretty good consistency over these years. That that's a testament to several different things, one of which being strong positive relationships with our bargaining units. Being able to secure long-term contracts that allow us to have some measurement of control costs over short-term ranges, three and four years in particular. The next part of the presentation talks about the three-part budget. And although we're not presenting the budget specifically in this way tonight, I do want to bring the attention to as part of the documents that will continue to become public-facing. As we work through the budget development process. One relates to this. So school districts are required to present, in words of educations. Required to present in plain language and delineate into three different expense categories, the administrative, capital, and program budgets. It it seems overly simplistic to to just group things in that way. But every single expenditure and every budget line in our district has been assigned one of those three categories based on state standards and metrics. That allows us to present the relative change in overall expenditure into three generic categories. Where the community and the board can see this information is in our required school district budget notice. It is one of the state-created templates that we provide information in, and we'll be showing it in that way. The three-part budget, you can see in in summary right now, taking the seventy-three million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and broken into these three categories in the following way. The administrative budget is comes in at nine million, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight. That represents a four-point-eight increase, four-point-eight percent increase from the prior year. You'll see below that that trying to just give a brief description of what each of these categories are. Administrative costs are costs related to the general operation and management of the school district. Including costs associated with the Board of Education, so like budget vote materials, district clerk salaries. Not board member salaries. Central administration, legal services, supervision of instruction. If you look at the relative percentage increase, it's higher than the other two. Again, size of the buckets matter. I'll share, as we look at the category sheet, there are some additions in that. In the administrative budget that don't exist in prior years, which are fairly conservative. Including a long overdue records management plan for us to address our district records, the retention and disposition of those records. In order to prepare for what was planned as part of the bond. As part of the bond, we'll be capturing space from our records room for steam storage, and so we need to move to a digital system. That comes with a fairly hefty price tag, but a well worth while remembered for us to get that space back. In the capital category, the budget is ten million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and forty-five dollars. It's an eight-point-four percent reduction. And I would not assume that to be that we're cutting planned upkeep of facilities in any way. That is primarily driven by the capital transfers that are in the budget. In the current year, our planned capital transfers well over two million. We're proposing a one-point-one million dollar transfer in next year. That makes up almost all of the reduction. In fact, there are many costs in there that are growing over time, electrical service. One of which we spoke about in terms of the utilities, and of course, there are contractual expenses in there that are growing as well. Lastly, the program budget, which represents costs related to direct instruction and services to students, including teacher salaries, classroom materials, transportation. Athletics, extracurriculars, and support services. That is growing by two-point-five percent on the current year, and it's coming in at fifty-four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, six thirty-six. In your budget books, I'm going to reference two sheets. I've put them in a very large format for you. And if you go to the category tab. They're on tabloid printouts, you actually have to take them out of the binders in order to be able to see them. But there are two documents. One is a five-year expenditure by category. It's actually by function code. This should look very similar to the document that we explored when we looked at our past expenditures. Right around the time of getting our financial audit. In the second document, which they look very similar behind it, is actually breaking up those costs by person. For those at home, those documents are available on board docs, but there's also a QR code link right on. On the screen of the presentation that will bring you to those some documents if you so wish. Just to talk about the the presentation of the category sheet, so we made a shift and transition away from arbitrarily, I say that in the nicest way, I don't mean it to, it comes off. As I make it over. I've used this from a lot of time. Taking individual expenses and saying, what category is that best from? That that leads to a real great chance that we do duplicated expenses in a category, that we misalign an expense. By trying to tie it to something that's different from the function code that we already knew. So a few years back, we started to make this shift, like I think it's the more valuable for us to be consistent and be able to show year-over-year changes. By the state accounting manual, we have function codes that are listed in the left-hand column, we've already put them into buckets and categories. And this allows us to really leverage our financial software to generate reports to assist us in this. And so if you're thinking back to maybe four or five years ago, it was maybe ten categories, this looks far more expanded. But I think it's more consistently presented in this session. I put some highlights on on the screen just to present it in a different way. I think most notable is that if we start to group all of the categories together, personnel expenses this year are coming in at seventy-eight-point-seven percent of the overall budget. This is consistent with past years. We've been in the seventy-five to high seventies range for several years. And that should be expected. You know, the the primary expense of any school district is going to be in teachers. Support staff, administrators, and the salaries of those who work directly with our students, initially. That is the primary driver of the educational programming. Breaking them out and trying to then group them into some smaller groups and put them in decreasing magnitude. Buildings and grounds representing four-point-eight percent. Out-of-district special education costs, so these would be direct costs paid. To out-of-district placements in private, public, BOSI's residential programming. Plus the related services associated with those placements. I think it makes sense to look at that both side of the budget, because then that does not include the expenses related to any special education costs running in district. Which include a lot of personnel-related expenses. Contractual services coming at three-point-three percent. Debt service, which includes our new debt service payment of just over a million dollars. Coming from the new debt service issues the other day, three-point-two percent. BOSI's services at two-point-six percent of particular note. In fact, you'll find in your packets, a whole tab for BOSI's. That breaks out our expenses in what we call the four-ninety object code. Any object code that has a four-nine, some digit after that, is a BOSI's expense. And it's a great place to look because we get a significant amount of aid back on our expenditures related to BOSI's. Not every expense is edible. But those that are, I believe we're receiving roughly sixty-five percent aid back. So when we can, we really do try to to funnel expenses through BOSI's, whether it be arranging for consultant opportunities. Tuition-based or or special education programming. The purchasing of materials and curriculum. Science twenty-one being one example of that. It's a great opportunity for us to both consolidate efforts across a region. But also to be able to receive some aid back on those expenses. Transportation services at just under one-point-five million and two percent. Which includes our out-of-district transportation expenses for private field students. School students, as well as athletic transportation, field trips, and events organized from the school. And then lastly, a broad category of equipment and supplies, although it includes more than that. You know, these are the, think of the resources utilized for personnel to be able to deliver instructions. Looking at those in buckets, I think. Tries to marry our old presentations with what we see here on the category sheet itself. Today, I won't go through line by line, I'm sure everyone's thrilled to hear that, the category sheet. However, if if the ask is to do so at the budget work session, I'm happy to do that. Historically, I've presented highlights, so material highs, material lows, those that have significant swings in either direction. And I'll I'll try to pull some of those out as areas to focus our attention at that time. The second document that falls behind that is the one that relates to personnel, and ultimately, this breaks out the seventy-eight-point-seven percent of the overall budget for us. I'll work in opposite order here. On the slide, you'll see the individual breakdown of those expenses that sum to seventy-eight percent. Fifty-four percent is in salaries, about thirteen percent in health insurance and Medicare costs. Five and a half percent are retirement contributions. Those are payments made directly to the employer. Employees Retirement System, DRS. And the teachers' retirement system, TRS. As well as a voluntary defined contribution for a few individuals. Social Security, I think of that as our tax that we pay on on salary, a four percent. And then in the broad category of other benefits, there are many things in there, workforce compensation, consortium costs. Amazing when you hit a blank wall. Disability, life insurance, and otherwise. Most of them are small. When you look at them individually. In total, they they do add up to a larger amount. The ETA and CSEA welfare benefits, which covers vision of dental, and actually represents the largest of that. If you take those numbers, you add them up, and that represents the seventy-eight-point-seven, looking at it in a category way. If you look on the the category sheet, it does show a five-year lookback. And and again, those in the audience or online, that QR code will bring you directly to this sheet. We like to present both the budget and the expenditures. Because although we're building budget to budget and referencing that number. Looking at the actual expenditures year-over-year can actually sometimes develop a more. Important trend as to what our budgetary expenses should look like, I'm going for. You'll note that when we look at the salary category alone, so that's the large bucket. We're looking at just a two percent increase next year across the board. So we'd say that that is, in in terms of budget-to-budget, one of the lowest we've seen, at least in my tenure. Below that, you'll see just the summary categories. I do want to bring particular attention, and it sounds off a broken record in some ways. To some of these buckets of health insurance. Budget-to-budget, we're looking at just about ten percent. The actual blended increase on the premium was blended because. The way Swiss Trip identifies rate changes is not applied uniformly across all categories. So somebody loves family insurance versus individual insurance, or two-person, or is on Medicare. The weight change, it is not the same. But they do calculate for us a blended rate based on the total pool of individuals and where they fall in that distribution. That that rate increase is just about nine percent next year. If you recall, last year, we were at over eleven percent, and so a nine percent seems like a good shift. If we look over a three-year period, health insurance premiums have increased by approximately thirty percent. This is a primary driver of any increase in any school district's budget. In the state and probably outside of the state as well. We often think of these numbers that are on the screen as out of our control, and to an extent they are. So I would consider them to be their contractual obligations. We have, we have created contracts with bargaining units and with individuals, and based on those contracts, we're obligated to fund in certain ways. And so when you think about the overall budget-to-budget increase, important to note that almost eighty percent. That's in this contractual category. And of this eighty percent, there are few areas that are of particular attention, but are going to drive this considerably. If you look at the dollar-to-dollar change. On health insurance alone. We had last year, or the current school year, probably eight-point-eight million, roughly nine-point-five billion. If you go back to twenty-two, twenty-three, we were seven-point-five million, and actual expenses were only seven. I'm not sure that there is a short-term end in sight for the increases in health insurance. Although I do believe it will attest that I think Swiss Trip has done an excellent job of managing their reserves. And appropriating fund balance to reduce the premiums year-over-year. The overall costs of in the medical field. The way that insurance continued to rise primarily due to significant increases in the cost of some medications. In the way that they are apportioned. Below the line, those personnel expense summaries, you'll see that what we see is a one. Sorry, a two-point-seven percent increase over the course of the year, rising from last year's budget of fifty-six billion, seven hundred thousand. To fifty-eight million, around sixty-two thousand. Again, happy to do get into any of those in a more granular level and more detail at the budget work session. The next slide references something you'll find in your packet under the revenue section. It's the first page that we'll find on there. Revenue should pop when we finally turn this page. So before we get into the revenue tax rate projection sheet, which is the typical format that we present to the community. A look back one year, where were we and where are we today? I I want to point out some changes that have occurred since our most recent presentations. The first of which is when we presented revenue projections to the board. It was just before the most recent update to our BOSI's. The governor's proposal uses the November database for your actual expenditures to generate aid for a future year. What we do with the time of our presentation on February eleventh. Is that our local BOSI's could give us a better depiction of that based on the February database. We now have the March database, which is showing even more. So we anticipate an increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional BOSI's aid. The second thing to point out is at that meeting, we presented the maximum allowable tax levy. At the time, the maximum allowable tax levy was sixty-two million, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine. It is currently sixty-three million, one fifty-nine, four twenty-nine, an increase of one-point-one million dollars. That is because based on our conversations and work in the finance committee, we have made the decision. That is because based on our conversations and work in the finance committee, we have made the decision to add one point one million dollars. On the expenditure side of the budget. For the aforementioned EHS paving project. When we add that, it's going on a line called transfer to capital. A transfer to capital is one of the exclusions permitted in the tax cap calculation. What that means is that in theory. By adding that to the budget line. The maximum allowable calculation goes up. Because it is excluded, it can be added directly to the tax levy limit. However, we are choosing not to raise taxes to that full amount. Because we're planning to appropriate remaining surpluses from this year. That's already been taxed, right? It's it's money we've received directly to next year to cost. And so although the maximum allowable allowable tax levy has increased. We have not changed the proposed tax levy itself. In conjunction with that, in the last quarter, as a result, the proposed appropriation of fund balance has grown. At the time on February eleventh, I think I told you, you know. Don't call me, but it's going to be somewhere between two hundred fifty and six hundred fifty, something like that, thousand dollars. With the addition of the one point one million. We would need to appropriate one point four, five, six million dollars. As a way of really bridging or balancing the budget between revenues and expenditures. Last thing worth noting before we actually look at the numbers is, you know, what we're watching for over the coming days to weeks. We do not have an approved New York State budget. But what we do know is that both the house. Both one house budgets include a proposal of foundation increases beyond that of what Governor Hopeless proposed. Governor Hopeless proposed in her budget, a minimum two percent increase to foundation. And hold each district firmless, meaning whatever the formula calculates, don't give them less, but make sure everyone gets at least two percent more. The two one house budgets have come in at a three percent increase and a two point nine percent increase as their floors. That gives me hope that that we won't be any lower than what Governor Hopeless has proposed. And hope that maybe there'll be a little bit more coming our way.
And this is based on the two percent.
Embedded in the state aid that you're referencing, so just to the point of the seven point six million in state aid. Is foundation aid that is a component of that, yes, it does include it. So we're looking at possibly three thousand, fifty thousand more on the state aid side as it comes. What we would do, if there's nothing material that we would have to change, any increase in the approved budget. That leads to additional state aid, we would offset by reducing the planned appropriation of fund balance. That we're using as the mechanism for bridging our gap currently. I don't anticipate that to be a large swing, again, probably less than a hundred thousand dollars at most. When you actually take a look at the proposed column in yellow, this is again a summarized version of what we see. To the question that just came, the state aid of seven point six million includes foundation aid, it includes the BOSI's aid, it includes building aid on past projects. And several other small amounts. This, the the state's commitment to fully funding, quote unquote, fully funding the foundation aid formula. For us over the last two years, and this would then be the third, has been a tremendous asset to the district. I recognize, as I'm now just saying, that there's a slide missing here from when we made the last minute change. That is included in your in your packet, if you take a look at the budget history tab. The first thing you'll see on the budget history is actually budget book history, vote totals. There's a budget to budget tax rate history, and then there's three charts, the first chart is the one I'm referencing. To compare the side by side bar graph. Looks like this for those who can see. So trying to present this each year to show the growing gap. Because for many years, it was a growing gap between tax levy and operating budget. And we were very attuned to the fact that as each year progressed, that that delta, the difference you see in the height of those bars kept getting larger. And larger and larger, and we had to sort of think, how are we going to balance the budget? We're in a very fortunate time period of the last few years. It happened to be that the state has increased the foundation aid we've received considerably. By approximately two million dollars over a three year period. And our interest earnings on investments have been tremendous for the district. Those two things together, that if you if you look at the last three to four years, the gap that you see between budget and. Levy has actually remained relatively stable, and we've been able to manage it. Very simply with those two features. It would be silly for us to assume that that will stay the same forever, in fact, if we were to elongate this. And look back on further years to the left, we're going to see different swings and changes. Pre tax cap initiative, prior to foundation aid, different aiding, aidable mechanisms that the state puts into play. If we had to forecast, I think what we know is that the state is looking at the foundation in form. How is will impact us in the future, not sure. But I I I'd probably say for the second time here, we could very well be a test case. For district with defining enrollment. High wealth ratio. Could be two areas that that very quickly adjust the way a foundation in formula is being calculated. On the positive side. Both one house budgets do make the recommendation that Westchester County. Be rezoned with Manhattan, New York City. And both Long Island towns. And taken out of the orange Putnam Duchess, kind of lower Hudson's grouping. In doing so, the foundation formula would actually use a higher weighting. On the calculation because it assumes the cost of doing business in those areas are more than others. So yeah, there's probably that in the flow, we've got, we have a five year decrease in enrollment, a three year at least decrease in enrollment. High wealth ratio, but the rain zoning of that, if approved, would be really, really beneficial to us. Continuing to work, sorry, I got a little lost on the replacement there. We talked about sales tax, interest on investment, additional revenues, which includes many different things. Order properties as one. Tuition from individuals and other school districts, some of our gifts, one of which we accepted tonight. We will receive more gifts than that, these are the committed gifts that we have, and they're the only ones we recognize on the budget. Contained in your budget folders is a list of all the gifts we've received. Tonight being a tremendous example of that, with the number of gifts and the quantity they received. But you'll see this year, we've received multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars in gifts from PTA, PTSA, ESF. E Club, various individual donors, and a tremendous gift as a death benefit. From a former student, it represents actually almost half of the overall money received. The last four lines that you see are the appropriated fund balances. You'll note that we do not plan to appropriate any fund balance from TRS or ERSS next year. But instead are planning to appropriate just under one and a half million from the World Economic Union general fund. The best, simple way to understand that is that that is in most cases far plus money invested in this year's budget. That we can appropriate forward to the next year. It's not currently targeted or assigned in any restrictive place. But simply allows us to use general fund balance to be able to bridge a gap or to balance the two budgets themselves. And then lastly, the property taxes, as previously discussed, the sixty million and fifty nine thousand obviously represents the vast majority of our funding. And the district historically has and will always continue to be the way we do so. That still is one point one million dollars below what the maximum allowable that we have permitted us to tax the campaign. Some additional information in terms of process, so tonight is a big step for us. This is the administrative budget presentation I proposed. We still have to have budget adoption, which is the board's actual formal action to adopt it, but if that will be presented to the community. And then there's an approved budget. So we actually denote all of these on the website, so there will be a board adopted budget, and then there will be a finalized approved budget. To get to those milestones on May twentieth, which is the budget vote, we have our budget work session scheduled for April eighth. I know that there will be some action items up on the April eighth agenda, just because of a need. For us to conduct some business, but the primary focus of that meeting. Is typically an opportunity for board members to interact directly with the administration on any questions or concerns they have in the budget. Talk about recommendations, and it'll certainly be very interactive, we'll have all of our district level administrators, our building principals. Present to answer any questions that you have. We've given them some direction based on feedback received throughout the process. One area being unless you'd asked for a breakdown of. One time expenses versus like carrying expenses that will carry forward, that will be all the percent of that time as well. Two weeks after that, we'll be asking the board to adopt a budget, so that's setting the number that will be put on the ballot. What's formal action is taken, we'll then begin preparing the final vote. We intend for the ballot to have the budget on it, and obviously school board access, as those are the two key components that will exist at that time. And then lastly, before we turn it kind of back over. We do have on the district website, we do have a whole page dedicated to the budget. You'll find several different things there, voter information. Links to the budget calendar, which will outline in more detail than than what I just showed as four. Areas, several different critical dates in the process. There are previous recordings of past budget presentations from our YouTube channel. The budget presentation slide decks will all be available there and are currently. You'll see several of those one page documents we put together as a summative way for those who are not looking to go into this as a hundred percent. Detailed analysis, but want more of a high level overview. The budget book once prepared, as well as budget archives from previous years. We are required to present the property tax report card that will be forthcoming. And then we every year put out a budget newsletter, that budget newsletter will get mailed to all addresses on file. But we also present it in a digital format for convenience for those. We encourage the community to reach out, really three key stakeholder groups to reach out to at this point. If you have any questions, you can email the Board of Education at BOE@edgemont.org. Certainly reach out to me or Dr. Hamilton at our email addresses or phone numbers that you see there. And that all becomes part of the processes we work through and and work to refine and get to the board's fully adopted budget. And for that, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much, so recognizing that in two weeks, we'll get to that.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to pitch it back to you, but I I just wanted to again thank Brian for. This this presentation this evening, hopefully you have noticed a trend in our budget presentations this year. And that we're trying to present them in more user friendly vernacular and ensure that. People who may not be as familiar with the budget process are able to follow it. And if there are tweaks that you'd like us to make, I'd appreciate that feedback.
So I will start into looking in this direction, I will start around here with Amine and Heather, if either of you right now have any questions on what we've heard.
I just appreciated the clarity, especially graphically and the visuals and how everything's kind of broken down, so good to Dr. Hamilton at this point. I appreciate it, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like some of these changes. Grace, do you have any?
I did, well, first off, I also want to say thank you, I get more and more excited every year because I understand more and more what you're trying to describe. And I think for the community's sake, it's also. Really incredibly important that they understand what it is that. You've been doing in terms of planning for the long term benefit in this district from a from a judiciary standpoint, and so. So much appreciation I have, friends, my question, it's not really not meant to put you on the spot, because I'm not asking, I'm not expecting much detail, and if you have no detail. You can also just pay this for another discussion, I'm just curious. As to what you know about, you know, districts who opt to self insure. As an alternative, given that some of these insurance costs are becoming almost unmanageable, like do you have any kind of basics to share at this point?
Sure, hard data readily available, no, I can share, there is a local district very nearby that is self insured. I do believe that they find that their year to year changes often spike and are less controlled. Because you may have, when you're self insured, just like when we talk about special education costs. You can have a high cost employee. Who very quickly changes the the expenditures. And so I do know that I think they have less of a smooth trajectory for us, although I wouldn't say nine percent and ten percent are. Comfortably smooth, they've been consistent, to say the least. We could certainly do some digging on that. Think most schools who self insure tend to be larger than we are. And the variance associated with a smaller group is is a little bit more impactful. I think we, I can, this doesn't answer your question, but there are two local, two. Groups that school districts in this area tend to be a part of. Swiss chip is one of them, we do have some data in terms of what the expected savings or cost would be. When comparing it to the other insurance program that that is included in your packet as well. And I do believe that Swiss chip has done a good job of managing that a little, to keep us on the lower side when compared to the other opportunity. We could certainly do some more investigating into the self insured.
And it would also require an extensive review of. Losses over the last ten years in order to predict. Potential vulnerabilities relative to whether or not that would. Any, even any short term savings would be advantageous. And then contemplate the risk exposure for any high cost claim. That could change that trajectory overnight almost.
And I would add, and they know that there's interested parties here as well, that are are. The plans that we are a part of, and how we we choose to do that is collectively bargained as well. And so if certainly we can investigate, but that work to move away from the current model requires many stakeholders.
Yeah, hi Brad, so I have a few questions, but I'll just start with one. And first a compliment, Jen did mention about the bond, and if people did not pay attention, it was Abil's deal, so great job on that. Coming to the budget, so this is a question I would put more to Ken. So Ken, you know, I look at the approval timeline and I see the budget hearing. Where the community can ask question is after the budget adoption. So this is more in terms of what kind of representative voice can the community have? Should we kind of want to incorporate changes, like why have a budget hearing after the adoption or like, what is the strategic way to position that calendar?
There, there are a couple of ways to to handle that, and I'll ask Brian to weigh in because he'll have more Edgemont history. But typically what happens is. There can be opportunities to have community forums around around the budget. Different organizations may host a Q and A session around that. But intentionally the wedded budget calendar is created. Is that board members as elected representatives of their community, of the community. Come with the knowledge and information that reflects the sentiments of the community. So that your voice in this represents effectively your constituents. And so that's what the way the process is is designed. It can always be altered, of course. But I've had experiences where those forums have been productive and experiences where they have not been particularly. Productive, and and Brian can share more about the Edgemont history in that regard.
Yeah, so I think actually perfect is a reference document here in your packets. So under budget calendar, which is the first tab, you'll see one from our attorneys. Which does a really good job of outlining the timelines, so we are actually, we're required to have budget adoption, the latest it can be is April twenty second. So we're actually holding our our budget adoption as late as possible in that. A, the official budget hearing, per the state's designation of that, has to occur between May sixth and May thirteenth. So it's, you know, to Dr. Hamilton's point, there can be other opportunities for. But the formal budget hearing that by the state's designation must occur in those windows, and it that is subsequently after a board has adopted a budget. I think the way that it's intended for that is it's to hear, this is what the budget has been adopted at. What are your questions to inform you about your vote, as opposed to change the budget prior to the vote?
And should the community want to give us some feedback prior to adoption, what would be the best way for them to communicate?
Easiest would be the email to BOE@edgemont.org or Dr. Hamilton, myself, or all three of us would be a good tool for them.
So two, three other questions for in context of the working session.
Before you do that, I actually have a comment that's related to what we were just talking about, which is that. Historically, I think we've also had something with sponsored.
sponsored by some
PTA, PTSA.
ECC, I'm not seeing that on here. So
Dr. Hamilton, I've spoken about that. We're happy to to any of those smaller interest groups. I'm happy to put something together. I know historically Edgemont used to, pre-COVID, we would hold an in-person PTA, PTSA event during the day, I think in the library here. When we got to the virtual model of our board meetings, the attendance of that kind of waned. We started to do it virtually. But I think that was seen as an opportunity to capture a group of the community who weren't able to come to board meetings at night. We weren't live streaming them. We weren't recording them. So it was actually a good opportunity to hear for the first time. We have held the PTA, PTSA one. I'd say maybe two of the last three years. And I think last year we did one through ECC, possibly had organized. So we're happy to to hear from any interest group out there, and we can we can create a smaller session as well.
So anyone who who's interested in sponsoring that, should they email you or?
Yeah, I think that's great. I think email Ken and I directly and we could go.
So I'll just give you some hints for the working session, but later does have a chance for us.
Oh, okay. Just a comment. I just want to highlight say too many about the 1.1 surplus and I guess it has that full process into providing the different options and really adhering to our feedback in regards from the finance committee about ways in which we could look at this long-term terms of, you know, being forward-thinking and being very fiscal responsible in terms of how do we utilize these funds so that that could positively impact future reserves and other ways that it could impact like debt service and et cetera. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll take it as an honor just to socialize that in a larger group. We had a lot of conversations at the finance committee level over the last several days about this, and the challenge in building a budget is you can't, we can't do it in a silo and just look at expenses and just look at revenues and say, let's balance the two. We do need to look at it longitudinally about what will the effect be over several years. So there's really two tasks that we do every time when we meet as a finance committee. We take a look at the fund balance, the current fund balance report, which is a snapshot in best estimate as to where we will end this year in terms of our expenses and revenues received. And then compare that to our last year's auditor's papers to say, do we expect our total fund balances of district to increase or decrease? We then have to project where would we put any additional fund balance that is generated due to surpluses? Whether it be in our reserves that are restricted, like ERS, TRS, tertiary reserve, the employee benefit accrued liability reserve, or our 2023 capital reserve. As we've shared many times from our audit presentations and otherwise, given what I spoke about before, high interest rates, considerable money coming in via tuition, sales tax increases, foundation aid increases, and being able to stay under budget on the expenditure side. We have produced a fairly substantial amount of surplus each of the last three years. The conversation most recently with finance committee is, so what do we do with the surplus we've generated this year? And it's just, it's a snapshot. It's our best guess to date. But we we believe that it, the ultimate decision, and we came to consensus was, it doesn't make sense to create a new reserve to put that into. But instead, we should use it as an appropriated fund balance to next year's budget. And as I exposed to earlier, although that does increase the maximum allowable tax levy, we made the decision to not increase the taxes to do so. Ultimately then making a direct effect of that surplus to material increases on the capital side. In doing so, we were able to not have to utilize some of our restricted reserves like TRS and ERS. We are absolutely going to need to appropriate funds from this next year and the year afterward. We are only taking on a debt service payment of $1 million for our $12 million issuance. The bond total is $62 million. So the remaining $50 million of issuances are going to come in the next two years, and each one is going to lead to more debt service. And to be consistent with what we've said to the community through the bond development process, we're going to try to manage that the effect on taxes by utilizing the reserves that we have. We're in a wonderful financial position. Having these surpluses is a good challenge to have. And so I would echo, I appreciate the finance committee's work on this in the the collegial effort to get into where we are.
I think I'll have questions once I stick into the panel. Thank you for all your work and preparing this.
Of course.
So I'll just raise two, three issues, and you don't have to answer them right now. You can take it to the working session. So the first is, you know, given that we are in very uncertain times, given that we have a very favorable kind of increase that we are forecasting in raising our revenues. Given these uncertainties, what should we do to, do you think it's it's still appropriate fund balance for Perry kind of take a much higher hike this year? Relatively less, slightly more hike or something which can cushion us in a much better situation for future? Because, you know, all these things will start looking a lot more tougher for the next two years. And I just want to put that, but I personally would be more inclined if we don't appropriate fund balance and have a slightly higher kind of a, and again, I'm just trying to put given how much uncertain we are at this point of time, given how much of federal intervention is there in terms of maybe some of the activities that you would like to pursue in spirit of Edgemont? Should we have some money kind of in 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 softer sense? So I'm just putting a thought. So that's one. Second is, you know, I hear from community that our numbers have gone down. But our kind of budget seems to be a lot more sticky than what the numbers represent. So if there's a way to get some perspective on how do how do these numbers financials look in context of a student enrollment numbers? So I would love to, I'm gonna, you do a fabulous job of giving us numbers. So giving some of the context of the budget in context of enrollment. So
Per student cost?
Something like, Brian can do a good job.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Because I do think that one area we haven't talked about at all here has been enrollment. Aside from obviously in the staffing, we're looking at section numbers and that that specifically does speak to, but we haven't looked at the enrollment trend. And and so I do, I think one of the areas that would be probably very helpful to look at before the budget work session would be the enrollment tab. You'll see in there, and I'm glad you bring this up, no less. There's several different documents, and they're going to seem like they're conflicting documents. They're not. They're just different data sources and different methodologies of projecting. So you'll see our beds day enrollment, which is where did we stand on October, I forget what bed day was this year. A date in October. It's it's the snapshot date used across the state. So you can be consistent and say, hey, every year we measured on this date. You'll note that that was eight, 1,836 students on beds. And I put a footnote there saying that if you go back to our demographic study that we did in 2022, 2023 school year, the projection was 1,865 students. So we were actually about 30 students lower than the projections at that time. That's kind of consistent with what happened last year as well. The second projection that you'll see in there comes as like a slide deck, and you'll see the green and the blue. This is coming out of Forecast Five or now Frontline, was called comparative analytics. This was software that we had purchased and invested in before we did many years ago, before we did the demographic study. This is very formulaic, right? It it's, it utilizes current enrollment, live birth to kindergarten enrollment ratios, and what they call cohort survival analysis. As kindergartners move up through 12th grade, what is the average trend of increase or decrease as they work their way up? Punch it into that very basic calculation. It's not rocket science for us. And it gives us different projections for future years as well. You'll note that the projections that you'll see there will differ from the demographic report, that they'll differ from other data that we have, but trying to use them as they're all a benchmark. If you to triangulate all the points, it's still points to a reduction in enrollment that we think will be somewhere in the low 1,800s. Maybe more importantly, in in terms of forecasting, no less to your point, is, you know, what does it look like over three, four, and five years out? We all know this could change very quickly because this same report had showed us as we were on the incline that we thought it would hold. And and very quickly kind of flipped the model the other way.
It's not that long ago that a lot of people were very concerned about running out of space at the elementary school.
A hundred percent. We had 2,032 students a few years back.
I mean, I I remember was very struck by the analysis Alec Clark used to do. Where he pointed out, sure, you know, in those upper 70s percentage salaries, but there's also a whole bunch of items that we have to pay for. We have to pay the electric bill. We have to pay debt service. We have to pay for all sorts of other costs that we have some flexibility on, but not a whole lot, and those are not necessarily linked to enrollment either. So it's just another factor in why the budget maybe doesn't move as much as one might think, given what the enrollment numbers are.
Sure. Alec will appreciate that shout out. That was, his calculation was always a, what do you consider to be like obligated? Versus what do we have any discretion over? And and of course, the things that are obligated, there is some discretion over, right? We make staffing decisions. We make other decisions otherwise, but it is a good way to think about. You know, their Edgemont budgets almost across the board of years have very little that fall into that discretionary. They're far more prescribed in that way. I think no less to to your point, obviously, and maybe there's piggybacks on what Jennifer just said. We're not going to see a one-to-one correspondence in the reduction of students to expenses because losing a few students or 30 students doesn't necessarily equate to maybe any change in the planned expense on the personnel side. And sometimes it does, but certainly we can look at an expenditure per student or some model as well.
Right. So I'm just echoing the voice that I hear from some of the forums that I go on community about numbers and so just giving some perspective would be very helpful for it. So that's at the point. The other point is, you know, the other point is, I know that we are being a little conservative on our seal stacks, sorry, interest income generation. And given again, the huge uncertainty and how much confidence do we have, given that we talk, now we have talks about 40% chance of recession, not from 10% and you have some crazy numbers here. So kind of again, just throwing it out there, what sense of confidence do we have and what kind of like duration of those investments, something which kind of gives us more confidence for it. The last thing, you know, you also mentioned about being very conservative on our gift planning. So we see small numbers here. We had a big gift money that came in this year. How does that flow through the budget? And again, you can highlight to those columns in the working session as to we got X, and this is how it is flowing in, and some question, just to get some more clarity, because we get some great money from PTA, PTSA some community members, we got a big grant coming one time. So how does that flow through the budget? Seems kind of a little unclear to me at this point, but.
Let me actually tackle that one right now, because I think it's opportune to do so. So what we what we try to do when when creating the two budgets, revenue and expenditures, there are many gifts that we would, I don't want to be presumptuous, but I can assume that there will be several gifts that will be provided to the district next year from many of our constituents. Those gifts should be coming in for unbudgeted expenses as well. So if we're not recognizing on the revenue side, because we're also not recognizing it on the expenditure side. So as an example, the, you know, tonight we approved gifts for an author to come to the school. There were not budgeted funds for their author to come to the school, and so the gift actually becomes a one-to-one correspondence for that. And in fact, those funds flow, they don't flow into our general fund. You'll often see, we now have that column for the depository account. More often than not, you'll see those PTSA, PTA gifts going into a TE account. We'll be converting those to what are called custodial accounts at the end of this year to be aligned with the most recent accounting standards. And and custodial accounts are exactly this. It's money should come in for a targeted specific purpose. Money should go out for that same targeted specific purpose. If there's any balance on it, it gets returned. And so it doesn't actually hit our general fund, and so we're not recognizing it on the other side. The, and that's why we try to recognize just the ones that are committed that we that we do know that we'll get. This is, that concept is synonymous with how we handle federal grants. So we don't budget for the potential expenses that we plan to charge to federal grant money that would come in. So I can share that this year we received $422,000 in federal grants. When we built the budget last year, we pulled out specific elements from the expenditure budget because we knew or we anticipated them to be covered by a separate budget in what we would call our F Fund, our special aid fund. And so it's almost like you're building a budget there as well. If we were to account for all the expenditures that we plan to charge to the federal grants in the F Fund and all the opportunities that are coming in via gift that are actually flowing through our TE account, we would unintentionally create additional surplus. Because we'd be saying, I need a revenue, something, I need to record a revenue on our side, possibly taxes to cover that expense, but it's going to get supplanted by something else. I know we've spoken at the good opportunity to to bring this forward, but we've spoken at the finance committee level about what to do about potential federal reductions in grants. And I think we we have a potential option that that we'll discuss at a later time as to how we can ensure that we are not put in a position where if grant money doesn't flow to us, that we then have to bring it to the general fund. And and I think we can talk about that as the year progresses a little further.
So my suggestion was getting a context would be good. Suppose if it's like half a million dollar coming in, then we know if suppose a PTSA has a tight year, what does it mean for the money that can, risk that can come to us on a general fund? Like, I completely get that, that it's fabulous that it's kept out, everything goes in and goes out separately. It doesn't influence our budget and your work.
And I think if you were to, and I don't want to speak for them, but maybe the work session we can, I think if you were to ask the building principals as it relates to those, if those funds weren't coming in for those planned expenses, we wouldn't have, we would maybe not generate those experiences as well.
Yeah, I think if if they're not paying for the storyteller, we're not getting the storyteller, right? And there may be some other things that could be paid for from other pockets, but I think a lot, yeah, a lot of those experiences. We do rely on the PTA and the PTSA to provide.
And I just want to take a minute to to just circle back to one of the lectures, questions a minute ago, and that's enrollment and and budget. And I know it seems intuitive that declining enrollment, student enrollment would lead to budget reductions. But the relationship between enrollment and the budget is is pretty complex. I think in order to see this direct relationship, if you were losing 33rd grade, third grade is probably a bad example. If we were losing seventh grade students and 39th grade students, you could say, okay, we lost 60 students. We should be able to reduce our budget proportionately in terms of staffing. But when they're sprinkled about in K through 12, it doesn't necessarily correlate in in reducing costs. The other thing that's important to to point out in our case, because 80% of our budget is directly related to salary and benefits. The fact of the matter is that even when enrollment declines, there are some costs that may not change, like the tax rate, for instance. And does it mean that because there are fewer students, the the tax levy changes or the tax rate changes in terms of what each family has to contribute in terms of their local school taxes? So it's not as intuitive as it may seem because the school budget is such a complex instrument and takes so many other factors into consideration, most of which are beyond our control.
One other thing on enrollment. So we heard a lot from the Sealy second-grade parents about ideal class size of of 16. Let's say we even make it 18. We would not just be adding one section at Sealy. We would be adding other sections in other grades at Greenville as well if we were targeting 16 or 18. I'm not asking you to run these numbers, but I'm curious, you know, how many more sections would we create? How many teachers would we hire? What's the long-term budget implications of of permanently reducing target class size? That's just something that, a question that's popped into my head because it's it's not one teacher at Sealy. It would be multiple teachers.
If we were to change the current language and in contracts and in the in the board's approach to establishing class size, you're absolutely right. That standard would be applicable to all classes, all grades in both of our elementary schools. And the other part to that is there is a compounding impact of that as well. So it's not just thinking about our third graders for the 25, 26 school year. It's what those additional costs are over the next It's what those additional costs are over the next three, four, five, six years because those those salary and benefit costs continue to compound and become cumulative. So it is, it's, I can appreciate everybody's comments and I, and I, I think it's quite insightful, but as we contemplate changing what that ratio may look like, do know that there are other classes and I can, I don't know off the top of my head, but there's probably one, two, three other sections at CELE and maybe four, maybe even five sections at Greenville that would be impacted just off the top of my head, my immediate recall.
And can I just ask a follow up question to that? So do we also have capacity facilities to kind of take care of it? So it's just not just not a question of putting a teacher, but also having a classroom. So I I don't know if how we are stacked on that. So.
Yeah, the answer depends on which which buildings we're talking about always for those.
Like CELE on Greenville because Greenville numbers look still very large and changing the numbers could have significant ramifications for more facilities. And do we have that? So I don't know. I'm I'm out of the sink on those numbers.
Generally, I mean, the rule of thumb we could always look by is Greenville is is at or or close to capacity. I know Maurice is very creative about carving out spaces and for us to be able to do so. And and as we know, we'll be also renovating our classroom space to create a steam space. At CELE Place, we do have, there are, there is space at CELE because of the considerable decline in enrollment. And so when you talk about a standard that uniformly applied, you're astute in saying that may not result in space in one place as it would in another as well.
I, unless anyone has anything additional, I think that
Just one broad comment. So I think there's a lot of documents in here. Again, I should have said it this way. I think at at your reading pleasure. And at the rate at which you want to invest in this, it is not expected that you've you know, really taken every single document in there. I give you probably more than you need in each area, but I think different documents in there speak to me in different ways. And so I I share them with you. Please know that, again, just based on the volume, there's a high likelihood that there's some sort of typo or error in there. If you notice it, let me know. I can provide updates to that. What I do know is that in, given the finance committee's decisions on on some of those subtle changes we made, I updated almost everything. The one document I did not get to, and so I'll have to share with you digitally is if you go to the tab that says budget document. This is supposed to be the landing place for the actual budget book, which won't be prepared until after it's been adopted. However, what I gave you was a printout from our financial software, which does do a one year comparison analysis of every budget code. The only code that is not correct is that transfer to capital. So just assume it to be one point one million dollars higher than that, but everything else makes sense in there.
So we should have everything by April.
There will be a quiz, Josephine.
There are no quizzes, no tabs.
With that, I think we are ready to move on to the consent portion of the agenda.
Yes, and being cognizant of the budget books that you have it that you'll be working on over the next several weeks, I will try to be very, very discreet about what makes it to the, very thoughtful is a better word, what makes it into the weekly report. So you don't have so much on your radar that you need to focus on. So I will limit it to high level items only. I'm very cognizant of of the work that you have before you over the next few weeks.
Thank you. Is there anything, anything, anything anyone needs to take out of order? Nope, looks like we're good to go.
Okay, this is the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approved the following recommendations by consent vote. Personnel items I one through I fourteen, which includes new appointments, resignation, leave of absence, side letter agreements with CSEA. Student Matters J one, which is the committee recommendation for the Committee on Special Education. And but business items K one through K seventeen, which is approval of budget transfers, amendments, approval of the holiday calendar for custodial and maintenance staff and school nurses and technology staff, authorization to enter into various agreements, recommendations to participate in the BOSIS Cooperative Bidding Program and selective settlement agreements.
You, may I have a motion? First Grace, second Josephine. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the consent agenda has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next business meeting will be on Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. Meetings begin at six P M immediately adjourned to executive session and then return to public session here in the L G I at seven P M. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night.